Good evening and welcome to the August 28, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both in person and with remote access. Also, please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. And I do need to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. Please notify the Chair. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected remotely. I don't see that anyone is recording. Just a few points about our hybrid format. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting, while in progress, may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 638-728-409 pound. That's 638-728-409 pound. You may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams, using the link that is in the agenda posted on the town website. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Let's start off with a roll call of Planning Board members. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, present.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
We're expecting Megan Story. She is not yet here. Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, here.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, here.
This is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. And I'll also ask if any board members need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda? All right, so let's go to our first agenda item, which is the minutes from the June 27, 2023. Oh, I'm sorry. July 27, yes. It says, yes, 24th. Sorry about that. July 24, 2023 meeting. Are there any corrections, amendments, additions? There being none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 24, 2023 meeting as drafted?
Madam Chair, I so move.
May I have a second to that motion?
Warren Chain, a second.
So we'll vote. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So the next item on our agenda is a site plan review for a change of use for 649 Main Street. And we have Attorney Norcross presenting. Would you like to go ahead?
Sure, Madam Chairman. Jamie Norcross, representing Rockland Trust. Stephen Carroll, a Vice President with Rockland Trust, is here with me today as well. So as I'm sure you've seen, driving through town, Rockland Trust closed its branch at 655 Main Street earlier this year and has opened up an ATM space as part of, and one of the locations in the Colonial Building next door, 649 Main Street. And the space inside, it has an ATM. There is also a couple offices that are, will be vacant most of the time. There's not going to be any staffing there. Just be if a customer wants to meet with an employee of the bank, there'd be available space for that meeting to take place. There's also some storage space. And what you see on the floor plan is an employee break room, which is just an area for a coffee maker and a bathroom and whatnot. This was previously retail space. So the parking allocation actually goes down based on the new use from 6 to 5. And as you can see on the site plan that was done by Eldridge surveying back in 2014, that shows all the parking spaces associated with the High Wheeler Square condominium complex, of which this unit is a part. And you see a bunch of parking behind. That doesn't even include the town lot, which is further to the south there. So there's plenty of parking for this particular space. So we think it's a, it's a good location for the use. Rockland wanted to maintain a footprint in town for its customers, and this allows them to do that. And so we hope you think it's a nice fit for the property as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Also, I'm just going to note in your staff report, it's noted that the requirement for this configuration is the equivalent of five parking spaces, where the prior retail use required six spaces, which was already approved in our approval of the configuration for, for the entire parking area that, that the Planning Board did in 2014. So let's see if the board has any questions. Yes, Bob.
Jamie, is there a pointer up there?
Oh.
Jamie, is there a pointer up there? Would you outline where the building is to make sure that everybody knows where it is?
Well, if I could see.
It's not even on that. It's not even on that picture.
It's up here. It's got to come down a little bit. There we go. It's right over here, Bob, on the corner of this side right here.
What, exactly what, right there?
Right there, yep.
Okay.
Right in there. So that's the former branch right here.
That's why.
That's the drive-through.
The way you looked at it and the way it shadowed, it was down here in the middle.
No, no, no. We, we were hoping to use the old site plan, just avoid the costs associated.
No, that's all right. Lisa, I know where it is.
It's right up in here. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just a funny one. I actually designed the parking layout behind this building oh, so many years ago.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Charlene. It's been put to good use over many years, and we really appreciate it. No, really. I'm quite serious. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Bob?
I have one. I think it's a good idea to have another rank in this town that you can use, even if it's only a satellite. I think it's a good, I personally think it's a good idea for this.
I agree. And I'm glad Rockland kept a presence in Chatham. That's great. So if there's no other questions, I would say that we should take a vote. And could I have a motion to approve this amended site plan for the change of use?
Madam Chair, approve the change of use and site plan review for 649 Main Street, Rockland Trust, from retail to professional office.
Thank you. And may I have a second to this motion?
Art Spru, a second to that motion.
All right, we'll do a vote. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
All right. The next item on our agenda is to continue with our long-range planning discussion regarding the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. And we have some recommendations from our professional staff, Ryan Christianberry, and I think Gloria was also, is she connected remotely?
I believe she'll be joining us in person momentarily.
Okay, great.
Just a little quick with that last application, so.
Okay, okay. No worries. But they have some recommendations. We've gone through the West Chatham Neighborhood Center draft proposal for zoning. And to the best of my recollection, I think we've covered all of the open items, and the board has made decisions on them. The one open item was to include inclusionary zoning language that will also, to some extent, address the density issues that are of concern to the board, as well as adequately allowing for the diversity of housing options that we're looking for in this zoning. And Gloria and Ryan have been working on that and have come up with some recommendations for the board, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the memo that I had prepared originally for our August meeting that we're now considering today provides that recommendation as a step to, when we, we first talked to you at the May 29, or 22nd Planning Board meeting, pardon me, we talked about what inclusionary zoning and incentive zoning looks like as a, as a bigger picture and how it might be applied, both townwide and then also as part of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. The town does have a mandatory provision for providing affordable housing units. It's 10% per, for every development of 10 units or greater. So it's one unit, and that hasn't been a particularly effective threshold. So while we're looking to reconsider that bylaw townwide, we wanted to take a small step forward with West Chatham and do something a little bit more discreet with, with adjusting that bylaw when making a recommendation here. So using the Cape Cod Commission Regional Housing Market Analysis that was done in 2017, which we felt was still very relevant. It has projections on wages, incomes, housing costs through 2025. That was a useful tool, as well as comparing the inclusionary requirements from comparable communities around us that have recently amended theirs to, to try to capture more affordable units through multi-unit developments. We've come up with the threshold of 20% inclusionary threshold. So from the 10% we have currently, it would be 20% requirement for development proposals of five residential units or greater. So any development proposing five units would have to provide one affordable unit. The income that we're, we are recommending is that we look at 110% of the area median income. So this looks, that puts us more in the range of our workforce and attainable housing, rather than the, the classical definition of big A affordable housing. And we've provided a couple of incentives for consideration as well. I know there's been a lot of discussion around density and payments in lieu. But the way inclusionary and incentive bylaws work is incentives are important to, to help developers make these, these, providing these units pencil out. So any development of five residential units or greater could be eligible for a density bonus of two and a half, the baseline density, provided that two of the units are income restricted to 110% of the AMI. Another option for an incentive is a payment in lieu. So if you're providing, if you're taking advantage of the density bonus, create one unit, but perhaps provide a payment in lieu for the other unit in order to fund some of our other affordable housing programs that can build and create units with those monies. So I think what we're looking for tonight is, is feedback from you on this recommendation, whether or not you feel it's appropriate, whether or not it meets your purpose and goal of making sure residential development that's created through the revised zoning in West Chatham are affordable and attainable to our year-round population, and whether we can incorporate this into the, the zoning and begin public outreach in September.
Okay, good. So let's just take comments from the board. Yeah, go ahead, Arthur. Yeah.
Couple of questions, just to clarify my understanding of this. When you talk about a density bonus of two and a half times, if we're talking about a density of four, that means they can go up to 10? And if we have a density of eight as a base, you can go up to 20? Is that, am I reading that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that two and a half is, is a big number. So is that the number that we want? And again, then what does, what should the base be? Because we haven't, we hadn't settled on that yet, if I remember. It's all, it's been all over the place, but.
So the base density, I believe at your last meeting, you voted to accept the four units per acre as the baseline density.
All right. If it's four, then I can understand why the, why the two and a half. That's, that, that works fine with me. And then the other, the other point I was thinking about, because we've had some experience with this, with payment in lieu. I, I'm wondering if, if this can, can be really elevated up to the point of making it a costly item. And what I'm looking for that is, I want to give a developer incentive to actually build the unit, rather than writing a check. And if they have to write a check, it has to be a big check. Now, I don't know if we can do that, but I, that, I'm looking for something like that to dissuade them from moving in that direction. I can understand why you might want to do it, but then it could be beneficial to us because we could use that for other purposes when we put it into the fund to actually go ahead and do this, especially with some of the upcoming properties that are going to be coming before us. I'm interested in hearing what, what you think about something like that. Can we set a certain thing and how it would be?
Yes. So there are typically two ways to calculate payment in lieu. There's either the affordability gap model, which is the cost between an affordable unit and a market rate unit, and you, you pay that differential as part of your payment in lieu, or the production cost method, which how much does it cost to actually build the unit? And in lieu of building it, you would provide that payment. Those two figures are both incredibly high right now, so it would be a big number.
Right.
Whether a percentage of that is more reasonable, we would have to, I think, workshop that and get some public feedback on it. But that, that would be the starting point, is we would go with the traditional models, unless there's another. But those are the two that I'm most familiar with.
Well, the one that would be most painful would be supportive of. I want to build that. I want to build things rather than give money away. All right. Those are the only two questions I have right now.
I just wanted to clarify. So for this density bonus of two and a half times the baseline density, this, the way we read this is, they could build 10 units, and two would have to be for income restricted up to 110% of AMI. One of those, they could make a payment in lieu. That would be possible. And when you say income restricted up to 110% of AMI, that's affordable with a capital A? Or is this affordable attainable? Or how do we understand that?
This would fall within how we are defining affordable attainable.
Okay, great. So we're still looking at a situation where they could, you know, build eight units at market price, which is, you know, and our baseline density is four units. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that, to me, that still sounds like a lot of units at market price and too few units at 110% of AMI. That's my humble opinion. But Bob Wurchafter.
The math is right, because if, if they build.
Did I do the math wrong?
If they build 10 units, they need four affordables. It's got, it's 20% has to be affordable under the current situation. So if they go to, to five units, they have to build two. But if they go to 10 or 12, they have to build five, four or five. It's got to, it's got to, you've got to keep the numbers in the same percentages. So instead of saying five units, developments, any development that wants to go higher has to, if they get 40% of the units is restricted, then they can go to 2.5 times the density. Is that what we're?
No.
Otherwise, they can build 12 units, and they're building two. That's, that's, that's better than they would be allowed under the normal circumstances, where they only had to build 10, and they had, only had to do two. Now they, now allow two extra ones, and they're still only building two. I, it, the percentage is 40, is 20% normal. We're going to let them go to twice, two and a half times the density if they increase the percentage from 20 to something higher than 20, which in this case, I think you meant 40%.
So we're not increasing, they wouldn't be increasing the percentage. The baseline percentage is 20%, and so we're just trying to deal in, in whole numbers for illustrative purposes right now. So four units per acre is the minimum density. The threshold for affordability is five units, so one unit would be required to be affordable.
Okay, so if it was 10, if it was a two-acre plot.
If they're.
They could do 10, and they would have to have two. Now you're saying, but they could go, go to twice that, that density, and they still only have to do two.
Two and a half times the density and two units. Yes.
So they could do 10 units.
Actually getting a, a break on how many they would do. If they did, if they did, yes. If they, according to your numbers, if they did five, they had to do.
One.
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 But if they go to 12, they can do two. That's less than 20.
Not 12.
They can't go to 12. They could go to 10. Five times the density. Times four.
The density is four.
All right, 10. If they go to 10, they do two. That's no, that's no different.
That's 20%.
It's 20%. So whether that threshold is, is the right threshold or whether the, the size of the development is too high, right? If the dense, minimum density is four, and you'd rather the capture point be two. Any development of two units or greater has to provide 20% affordability. That's one for every two. Right? So I think, I think.
Well, it's 50%.
Right.
That's unfeasible.
No, no. I, I'm okay with the one to five. But when, but it's two to 10 under normal circumstances. Now, when we give them extra density, it has to be more than, than two.
So I think realistically, this is going to, I think the goal of allowing more density is to actually ensure that units are built. I think that when you're talking about these lower density, like four and below, we need a sort of partial payment in lieu scheme to capture some, you know, payment for units that would otherwise be constructed, but are not going to be constructed, because 20% of four is, first of all, not a round number. And second of all, probably doesn't pencil out because that level of affordability is not going to be subsidized by, you know, three additional units. So.
If we're going to have a five unit, we're only going to have four unit.
I, I agree. That's why we need a really robust payment in lieu program. And so, and we, we may have five or more units with the density bonus. Because, because that gives a lot more market rate to make profit off of two. So there, so there actually is an incentive for building more. I would say that maybe what we should look at is, when someone does maximize that density bonus to 2.5%, then they have to create those two units, as opposed to a payment in lieu. So if you, if you are allowing someone to do 2.5%, 2.5 times the density, it doesn't mean that they're actually going to do that. It could end up being less of a density bonus based on, you know, topography. based on, you know, topography, shape of the lot or other things that would prevent someone from doing 10 units. And maybe that's the circumstance where the person who's developing it does one unit, and then the other is like a partial payment in lieu for the creation of, you know, that second unit or like 75% of a second unit or something, depending on how many. I just think that if you, if you go beyond 20%, you, you know, it, it might, it might work. I'm not 100% sure that it, it won't, but I think that it's very reasonable to expect two affordables out of 10. By, by example, in Provincetown, and that's where we see a lot of these things being done because we have a really strong inclusionary bylaw there. This is really fascinating. So we ended up having a one-sixth requirement. So one out of six units has to be affordable. And then we do like a density bonus that allows people to increase the density and do more. And the most developments that we've seen, and this must be the sweet spot, is 12 units with two affordables, often not using the density bonus just because we allow a lot of principal structures on a lot. So I'm always going by that as my baseline for what's possible. So I know that you can do a development of 12 units where two of them are affordable and that pencils out. So we're asking people to do a development of 10 units with two affordable. So it's a little bit tighter in that respect.
I mean, I think I hear your concern that we're not getting the amount of affordability that you would like to see in each development. But I think it's important to remember that we're creating a tool that allows the market to meet our affordability requirements, right? So we have, the market has to be able to build the unit. And under current conditions, you know, it, it, as Gloria has mentioned, it wouldn't pencil out if...
So, so the understanding is they could only build four there. We're going to take that property and allow them to build 10, but two of those would then end up being affordable.
Yes, yes. That's the current proposal.
And, and the 10 would be the maximum, correct?
Correct.
Couldn't go any higher than that.
Correct.
But they could go lower.
That, that's a per-acre type thing. Bob was mentioning a two-acre property. Well, that's double that amount, though. That potential, correct?
20 units for affordable.
They could do 20 units on a two-acre property, maximum, and four would need to be affordable attainable.
Correct, right. And again, that matches up with the 20%.
Okay, so they only, I, I, I just want to make sure that we tie the, the density bonus to that, to making sure that we get the two.
Right.
So if they, if they decide to do nine instead of 10, do, are they still have to do two because they exceeded the density, the density bonus?
That, so, but that would be over 20%. That's not the way it's written, but it's something we could look at. So the way I would envision that, the way it's written, is that they'd have to build one and then they'd have to give you a payment in lieu for, which isn't expressly stated. A payment in lieu for like 80% of a unit. So whatever, whatever we figure out, the, the rest would end up being in a payment in lieu.
Okay, all right. I think that needs to be a little more specific.
Okay.
Well, that's also like a, a value judgment on your part. Like, do you want to, do you want to approach it that way? That we make them do one and then if they're so close to that second one but still not hitting the number, that we do a payment in lieu for that partial unit that they can't actually build because it's a partial unit?
I'd like to see it some, is there a way that it could go the other way? That we would give them the incentive to actually build the second unit even though they haven't quite reached that threshold? I don't know if there, if there's a way to create an incentive. So if they were going to build nine, that they would build two and they would have an incentive to build two rather than do one with an 80% payment in lieu?
Maybe the incentive is what, what Art was talking about earlier, that like for that circumstance, when you have a development of that size, that the payment in lieu is, you know, whatever it is, 80% of the cost of constructing an actual unit, which is probably, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And at that point, it might just be worth it for them to, to construct it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It isn't, it won't be feasible. The only thing that I, I suggest, maybe if they build nine, they do 70% of the money because they didn't put the 10th unit in. You're going to be careful. It's not feasible to sometimes build. And if you want to make a payment, if they don't put, they don't put the eight units in and then they'll build one affordable and they're only, they're only three-quarters of the way to the, to the second unit, that they, they just make a three-quarter payment. I don't think you can, if it was a full payment, that's not, that's not right. You know what I'm saying? If they built eight units, one affordable, and then said, "Look, we're not going to build the other unit because we can't, we can't afford it." And they, a partial payment instead of a full payment. And then if they only build six units, they build one affordable and they make it a half payment or something like, something like that. Because they might not have the space also to do that.
Right, yeah.
So I mean, sliding scale on the, on the second unit, either build it or don't build it and we're, we're still going to have X amount of dollars to, to go. But, because they will do the nine units so they don't have to make a full payment or do, do six units or seven units and then one affordable. So they'll, they'll, they'll figure out the maximum they can get out of it without paying the most. It's going to be a tricky, a tricky thing. There's going to be a lot of backbeat from the established builders around here for that. We better, we better make sure we're very clear on exactly what we want.
I mean, if we do it that way, and I think we should, if I was a builder, it's for 20% more, I get an actual, another property, another unit rather than pay up.
That, that could be the incentive for it.
So, all right, this works, but I, it's a little confusing as to read it and, and make, make it clear to the builders what, what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we'll learn a lot as we workshop this through public outreach with the builders, right? And I think that's an important next step.
And what I think, to sum up what we're suggesting now is that there's a directly proportional payment in lieu in direct proportion to whatever number of units they're building. Yes, if it's not 2.5 times, if it's, instead of 10 units, it's nine units, that the payment in lieu for that second affordable attainable is the correct percentage. And we might even want to create a table that explains that, so it's very clear to the public when we're putting this forth to the public.
So...
Yes, go ahead, Charlie.
Two things. One, I agree that we need to see some examples or something of, you know,
A table.
How, how, how we get there. You know, if, if somebody wants to do a density bonus of only 2.3%, you know, what does that work out? Because you, you made a comment, Gloria, and I wanted to follow up before I lost it, that the bone, density bonus could be up to 2.5. So that needs to be made clear, that it isn't 2.5. It's up to based on site conditions, what have you. But also, we don't want to lose, and that's where the percentage comes in, that if somebody decides, "Ooh, you know, if I only do 2.3, I don't have to build that other unit." It's like, nah, 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 it doesn't work that way.
Yeah.
So there needs to be that, that extra oomph in there. So that, that, I know there was another thing in it right out of my head, but I agree with, with what's been discussed.
Well, well, the other thing is if they're building five units, they have to build the affordable. If they build six units, they have to build the affordable, right? So they have to continue up with at least one unit.
Right, correct.
And then...
Until they hit 10, and then they have to build two.
And then they have to build two, right. And then the, the sliding scale, I, I agree that that's, that makes a lot of sense. For each unit that you add, you have to, there has to be some contribution.
So can I get clarification? If they build three, do they have to contribute 60%? If they build two?
They're below the threshold for, for inclusionary capture if they just build three units.
But four, at four, they have to, at four, they have to pay 80%.
No, at four...
And we'll never get it, we'll never get a five. Everybody will build fours. You said before that we, that we want to push them to five, so they're, we're charging them for four.
With four, there'll be a payment in lieu, a partial payment in lieu for, for say 80% or 75% of a unit, whatever it is. And I don't know that that's necessarily going to keep people from not crossing that five-unit threshold because they get so many extra market rate units. And that's where the money is. It's not in, it's not in making affordable units.
Well...
Yeah, I think we have to refine that. I mean, right now, we don't have it reflected that a payment in lieu would be required if you're below the threshold. But I'm hearing that that's what you, you do want.
I think that makes sense. I mean, the other way is to...
I don't see how it doesn't. You, you know, we're, we're looking for affordable housing. If you're building a regular house in this neighborhood and you're not contributing, then you should pay in lieu. I, I, I'm not even sure it doesn't apply to single-family houses, but we don't allow them in here, so we don't have to worry about that.
We just, we, we can't get into a situation where we're paying some, where we're requiring an impact fee, right? Like, we, that, that's been problematic in, in other communities in this area. So let us look at that a little bit more.
So I also just want to clarify, the first bullet point, inclusionary zoning requirement is 20%, but it's only applied if five units. Is that correct? Yeah, is that a correct understanding? So in other words, just what you're saying, they can build four units per acre and there's no requirement for any affordable attainable?
That's how this is...
Is that correct?
That is how this is structured right now, but I'm hearing that you'd like for us to consider a payment in lieu option for, for multifamily developments that are under the five-unit threshold.
I'm asking that question, could that be done? Could the 20% just apply to any building?
The inclusionary bylaw, which is going to be separate and apply to the whole town, is going to have that 20% requirement, hopefully for a low threshold, like two units or more. So we did not incorporate that into West Chatham zoning in particular.
And in your opinion, what if we did?
So 20% at two units means one affordable for every one market rate, and whether or not that is buildable?
It's just got to be a payment in lieu scheme for under five.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm good with incorporating that in West Chatham. It'll be a good test for inclusionary when we go to apply it for the whole town.
So we could do that, is yours?
I don't see why not.
Okay, so how does, how does the rest of the board feel about that?
I don't think it will work.
It's too restrictive.
I don't think it will work. It's not, you have to make it profitable to the builder, okay? And the only, the only thing I see is three buildings and, and the fourth building is going to hit them. The four buildings and one, and the fifth one being, being a, a market rate, you know, not a market rate, an affordable building, is, is going to be hard enough on a person. I mean, we're talking, we're talking $400,000, $500,000 a unit, okay? And, and so their profit margin has to overcome that affordable unit. And, and they're not going to do it for free.
I think we can take a nuanced approach and have different tiers of payment in lieu and different percentages of a unit.
That's fine, but I, I don't see, I don't see a guy putting two buildings up and then making a big payment. Maybe with three buildings, they're making a big payment. Four buildings, making a payment. And, and then after that, it's, you're going to build a fifth building and then a sixth and seventh one with a payment.
I'll tell you my favorite story from when we passed inclusionary in Provincetown. So that inclusionary bylaw...
Wait, wait, let me tell you, Chatham is not Provincetown, okay?
The building, building is building when it costs to, when it comes to construction costs. So we have an inclusionary bylaw that applies to two units and more. We have a tiered system of payment in lieu. We had a lot of pushback from the real estate community saying that this would, you know, completely squash development. It didn't. So the day after that bylaw passed, Jim Savco, a local developer, came into my office, sat at my desk, opened his checkbook and said, "What do I owe you?" I said, "For what?" And it was, it was a project that was already approved. He was ready to write me a check for a partial payment in lieu for a project that was already approved. And obviously, it didn't apply and I told him that. But I think that it can be done in a way that it's not going to stop development or, you know, cut into profit so much that people can't, can't handle it. All I have to say is a developer came into my office the next day and was ready to write a check.
And Bob, we're, we're going from building maybe two properties on an acre to allowing them to put four units on an acre just right away. So there's a certain amount of additional profit that we've granted by allowing multifamily.
I, I, I understand, I understand and agree with that, but...
So there...
But there still is going to be a, it's still going to be a tough take on, on, in some time to make sure that all the Ts and Is are dotted and crossed. You're, you're throwing, you're throwing something out to people that only want to see one, one unit per lot.
Yeah.
And, and the lots that they have have huge, huge houses on them, okay? And they don't, they don't want to see it. This town is getting run over as Provincetown is getting run over. But we, we still are spread out more than Provincetown in our building structures. Provincetown is, is like Rockport. It's only so big and there's only so many houses you can put on there, and they are packed.
Oh, I know.
They have an old house with, with six, six apartments in it. That's not going to fly here. And, and they're not going to change over the, the big buildings into apartments. They're going to build new. So that means they're going to tear down and build new. And there's not that much to tear down to build new. So it's, it's, we're in, we're in a little different situation than Provincetown ever was.
Well, and I think it's important to remember what the big picture here is. I mean, part of the reason we have a housing crisis is because we have a housing supply problem, right? We don't want a lot of one and two units with a cash payment into town coffers that doesn't have a program set up yet to create the unit on the other side, right? We want, you want units to be built.
Exactly.
And in order for them to be built, an approach that recognizes the market dynamics will do that better than...
Oh, I, I agree on, on, on a monetary pennant for, for not building. So, but, and just make sure that the scale is there. So, so it's not overpowering to the builders. It's justifiable to, to the town to do it.
I, I think that some of what Bob's saying is, it, it catches my thinking here associated with the residential part of this. I'm not talking about whether it's affordable, not affordable, whatever. The residential component in a village center is going to be an important aspect. If we don't get it, if it doesn't get built on any type, it, it's not going to make a village center work, in my opinion. So I think that on the lower end, to be so restrictive that, to have it be a cost prohibitive so that they walk away from any higher amounts, I think would be a disservice associated with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So I, I think setting something up in the lower end, as you mentioned, that if you build two units, you got to contribute, that might be a little bit too restrictive, is what I'm thinking. So I don't know where that number is, but I, I, I'm, you know, I'm very comfortable with five units. You got to make, you got to build one, period, all right? And then the incentive above that. Because now all of a sudden, there's starting to be some mass, some quantity to make, make a payback, payment. But I'm, I'm concerned about putting on a, a cost for not building a, any unit at all for, for below five. So I would just be cautious about that from the board's standpoint of making this decision. And I, and I thought, isn't our baseline today four units per acre, anyway?
That's the baseline.
In, in West Chatham Neighborhood Center, yes.
It's, I mean, it's, that's always been the baseline of, of what we've been talking about since day one, all right? We only, we're elevating, going beyond that only because we're trying to deal with the, the affordable, affordable side of this-
Right.
A little bit more.
And I think this approach is reflective of that, right? I mean, the-
Yeah.
The build-out analysis that was done, the wastewater analysis that was done was based on four units per acre. That's all in the Route 28 visioning study that the Cape Cod Commission did.
Okay.
So, we're building on that and then creating this inclusionary baseline and incentive approach just to deal with the affordable and attain-, or, I shouldn't even say affordable, attainable. We're really talking about attainable.
Right.
Um, and it's also worth mentioning that these multifamily redevelopments or developments would be subject to your review through site plan approval, right? So, these would be, have, they're not, it's not a buy-right building permit situation. This, this will go through you, and any sort of density proposed would be part of your site plan approval process.
Um, I, I thought there was one interesting thing in the article you referred us to, is the amenities, too. Outdoor amenities and that. Um, there were some interesting points that they had in that article. It, it, it may mean more than one type of amenity. And I, I like your discussion there about, uh, we have a site plan review, depending upon what's being proposed there, the number of units, whether they're going to be on the higher end, whether it be more likely families versus, uh, uh, just a couple or something like that. Then I think the amenities would have to be looked at very carefully just to make sure that you're not just putting a building there and nothing else. Well, we give you a couple parking spaces. I think the amenities is going to be just as big of a deal as getting the residential in there.
I just wanted to make a, a comment. We are looking at a situation here where our baseline density is four units per acre, but remember that back in 2014, when the first analysis was done, and that four units per acre was recommended, that is an increase in density. That's what we're increasing the density to. So, my concern right now is that, as it stands, everybody could build four units per acre, which is our baseline density, which is an increase in density. And the reason we increased the density was to allow for more, to four units per acre, was to allow for more diversity of housing options for the people of Chatham, but as it stands now, everything could be developed at the density of four units per acre with no affordable attainable. And I just think that is not an acceptable outcome for the intention of this bylaw. So, do you have a way to address that thought?
Can I suggest something? Uh, I, I was thinking about that, and I was thinking about the, the unit above the, uh, commercial spaces and other things like that, that if people are willing to build at, at four or below, we should be contributing some of that money that we collect from other places to help them do it. It shouldn't always be on them alone. I mean, if we're having trouble spending money and we have a pool, why shouldn't we incentivize people who are willing to build affordable housing as part of their project at higher rates, or, or when there's only two units and they're both affordable? Shouldn't, should, shouldn't there be a, an incentive on that side for them as well? Because it really, really, if they're building less than four, they have no incentive to make any of them affordable, and we probably should have a way to make that happen.
Well, I, I think that's the role of a different body. I mean, affordable housing trusts have that capacity to, to create funding programs, um, and, you know, Gloria can speak more about the direction of, of our trust. But, you know, I, I think that's a different arm of this, but it plays an important role, for sure. I mean, I, to your point, Catherine, about four units being market rate, by the very nature of them being in an apartment-style development, they will be more affordable than a single-family home, right? Just, but, um-
Good logic, yeah. Yeah. Light work. In Chatham, I, I, I mean, I think Bob Dufus is right. Chatham is Chatham. And Chatham is unlike no other community, and I think there is always that possibility that even the smaller multifamily units will command high prices.
Sure.
Yeah. So, that's my concern, because we increased, we're thinking that we brought the density down from eight units to four, because this board wanted to increase the baseline to eight, but I think Ryan brought up, um, a good logic that we don't have the analyses available to increase it to eight, so it's better to stay with the original recommendation of four, which was Cape Cod's commission recommendation back in 2014. But just a reminder that that's an increase in density, and the whole purpose of that increase to four was to allow for more affordable, attainable diversity of housing options, and we are, are setting it up that, right now, that all four can always be market rate.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
What, have we written in stone the four units?
Nothing's written in stone at this point.
Why, why couldn't, why couldn't we say, "Okay, we'll give you, uh, for, per acre, we'll give you four, but one's got to be market rate," I mean, affordable.
Go for that.
You can have three-
Yeah.
At, at market rate, and then the, the fourth one, you need to have it at, at, instead of four and five, why don't we make it, why don't we make it three and one? And then, uh, six and one, or six and two, I should say.
So, that would be a 25%.
25% inclusionary threshold.
Three, three units should offset the cost of a, an affordable unit, if it's done correctly. And the unit could be smaller. It doesn't have to be as big as the other units, you know? So, we say, "Okay, three, three at market rate and one, one unit at a, at a, an affordable rate," and, and it can be smaller. You know, and if, if, if they're, they're 1,200 feet, this could be a 900, 900-foot unit. They might want two bedrooms in, in one, and you could even make them a single-bedroom, uh, affordable unit. And, and that would be a, a husband and wife, or girlfriend and boyfriend, two boys, two girls, whatever, not a fam-, it wouldn't, it would be hard on a family, you know what I'm saying? For a young family, it would work for a couple of years, and the, uh, now, and I take it, are these bought or rented?
We can't, go ahead, Ryan.
Either.
Okay.
So, typically in a private develop-
Typically in a private development, they are sold, because most private developers don't take on managing rentals,
Right, they want the-
collecting rents and stuff like that.
But, but it could be the other way around, too. So, that's what I mean. So, so, a, a, a couple buy, buy the affordable unit, and, uh, say down the line, three or four, five years, they want to move, they can, they can find some, some other place, which is, we all know is like, uh, banging your head here. But, but in that, that way there, it would be less units, but more units. It would, it would, the three would pay for the fourth one. The six would pay for two, or the six would pay for, uh, or for five, and then, or what, you know, so, whatever, along the lines like that. So, they would end up with either eight, seven, something like that.
The, the only challenge I see there is if it's a 25% inclusionary requirement, then we're talking 40B, and 40B can get much greater density than the four, or eight, or 10 that, you know, we might have here. So, it's, um, and it wouldn't conform to our, our zoning, you know?
No, but the 40B would still work in, in our favor as far as affordable housing.
It would provide, um, up to 80% of area median income, so it's a different kind of affordability that, that you'd be capturing.
ZBA would have control of the permitting, not the-
I, I would caution our board about going that high, only because of that threshold.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think that that's where we want to be. Uh, I, I think if we want to keep this within our purview and site plan review and all of that, I, I think we have to be careful about sticking with a 20%. I thought the 20% is double what we have right now.
I'm just throwing this out to, uh, to, to make chew food.
I think it's a, I think it's good for us to take that back and talk about it relative to the payment in lieu. I mean, if 20% is the, the threshold, and four units is the baseline, then maybe through some reasonable rounding, you're, you're providing a unit or a payment in lieu, so let us sort of-
Yeah, that might be good. I'm just concerned that, you know, we'll, we'll get developments of four units per acre, and all will be market rate, and the whole area will be developed in that matter. Possi-, it's a possibility, and we won't get what we're looking for.
We'd still get more of the missing middle housing type that we don't currently have, right?
Because it's smaller, yeah, that's true.
And we would be getting the 80% in lieu on a four. We already said that, right? No?
I, I think that's what we want to take a look at.
Yeah, that's what, yes. Yes.
But I would rather-
Do we define multifamily? How many units is multifamily? I don't have it in front of me. I apologize.
Our zoning has a definition. I don't, I don't remember what it is, though.
So, that-
I think two.
Might-
Probably three or more. I mean, that's a, that's a typical definition.
Yep.
Definitely.
Um, and the other thing is, the units themselves that would be attainable, affordable, or affordable attainable, are those going to be permanently deed restricted?
Yes.
So, 99 years, the formula they use for resale and all of that.
Correct.
Regardless of if they're 80%, 90%, 110%.
Correct.
Perfect.
Okay. Other comments, questions, discussion? Warren, yes?
Um, I want to thank Bob, because I was going to suggest we kick around the idea of a 25% inclusionary. And, uh, the minimum units for a development would be four, so you'd always have at least one affordable unit, and was hoping there's a way you can make sure that that would get built first, not last. But my biggest issue is that, um, with the baseline density, I reluctantly went along with the board, when it was pointed out that the build-out analysis that had been done, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, only was done at four per, per acre. And unless we redid that, um, we'd, you know, be suspect to challenges or whatever. It, my understanding that, um, that Bob Dunkinson has already taken a look at that and said, you know, densities of eight or 12 in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center isn't going to make a whole difference. And it's, uh, would be a folly to go through another build-out analysis. If that is so, then I, um, really not in favor of going forward with the baseline density of four per, uh, per, um, per acre. But rather to go back to to our eight per acre. Especially when, uh, the board has also favorably looked at the idea of, we're envisioning anyway, transition zoning areas on either side of the neighborhood centers where increased density might be there, but single-family houses would be permitted, not prohibited. Such that you wouldn't go from a very high density to R20. Uh, there'd be a transition area. But at any rate, eight or 12 units per acre is still dramatically less than some of the densities in Orleans or other towns. And, um, if our objective is to try and create a neighborhood center that is, um, smaller units, lower cost, and has a meaningful amount of affordable housing, seems to me we have to try and revisit the baseline density if, in fact, Mr. Dunkinson's comments, uh, warrant, are reconsidering that. Certainly, I would not have voted in favor if I had heard that he said, you know, our West Chatham Neighborhood Center is not necessarily a model for every neighborhood center either. But at least his comments were with respect, I thought, to, uh, the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, so I'd be very much in favor of making that baseline density eight, and then tweaking the numbers there to see where you come out in terms of numbers of affordability and building them, and with the idea of getting more units and more affordable, attainable units built. I also, um, am very, uh, I'm still very unsure as to whether we have come up with a way to ensure that houses, or that units, however many, are not, uh, built by developers, sold, and then essentially just becoming Airbnb short-term rental units such that nobody lives in the neighborhood center. The, uh, the suggestions have been that we can put conditions on things, uh, when a site plan is coming up for review. That, I'm not sure how that would work. And certainly would be, uh, much more in favor of having a bylaw explicitly indicate, uh, either with notes or actually in the bylaw, that rentals in the neighborhood center of less than 182 days are prohibited. Meaning that anyone who rents is, you know, able, is by definition, I guess, a permanent resident of the town. And, um, because I can easily see, the more units that are built, and if they're less, um, less costly, the ones that are not affordable are very likely to end up as just investment properties that get rented out short-term for as many mo-, days, weeks, or months as possible, and nobody lives there. They're in Florida, and, um, that's not what we're trying to do here.
They're poor.
So, at any rate, those, I've got some other comments, too, but the big one is whether we can revisit the baseline density as well as the inclusionary percentage, I think going up to four, or 25% with a minimum density of four per unit, uh, per acre, with, uh, uh, going up to eight per acre, and then with incentives that would take you up to a density of 12. And that would end up with, you know, however many sliding scales and so on. The payments in lieu, it seems to me, uh, Ryan, your write-up was talking about on a case-by-case basis. It would seem to me that, um, it would be very helpful to developers, as well as this board and future boards, looking at site plan reviews, if we could have some reasonably crisp guidelines as to what bases would be applied to, uh, approving payments in lieu, since our objective is anything but payments in lieu. We want things built. We don't want things that are in a, um, financially inappropriate or don't make sense to build. No, and payments in lieu, I think there's a room for them to have a place here. But I think that, um, to the extent we can include in the bylaw or in, uh, somewhere a very crisp, uh, as extensive as possible basis for the board to determine if a payment in lieu is appropriate, and also how much, and what are the criteria to be used by the board, would be very helpful.
A formula would absolutely be forthcoming on payment in lieu. We just wanted to introduce the concept as part of this overall scheme.
Yeah. And also, I just, I wanted to respond to your first point about the eight units versus the four units, and Dr. Dunkinson's analysis, and the build-out analysis is, I understand it, and Ryan will correct me if I'm incorrect. There were two separate analyses. One is the build-out analysis that was done by Phil Daskom in 2014 as part of the Route 28 Visioning Study, and the second was Dr. Dunkinson's infrastructure analysis. And both of those, to the best of my understanding, were, were done with the baseline density increased to four units per acre, not eight units. So, that was the whole reason why the board, um, why we, uh, presented that information to the board, and the board chose to go back to the initial proposal of the baseline density of four units per acre, simply because we don't have the analyses to back up a proposal to the town, because we will be making this proposal to the town of eight units per acre. At this time, we do not have that backup, yeah.
Well, Madam Chairman, that's why I went along with it exactly, all of those reasons. Again, maybe I'm misinformed, but my understanding was that, uh, Mr. Dunkinson had indicated that without, there was no need to do a build-out analysis with respect to our eight-to-12 unit density per acre, that there was no problem with the water and sewer.
That's an infrastructure.
But if that's not the case, then-
So, that, that analysis just looked at flow, just wastewater flow, right? A build-out analysis looks at a, a lot of other land use impacts based upon the level of density. So, there was a flow analysis that was done on the Cape Cod Commission's build-out analysis that supported the increase to four units per acre. And similar to what they did during that flow analysis, we're suggesting here could be done as part of your site plan approval for a project looking to increase the density through the density bonus. So, that, that flow analysis, we would seek comment from the water and sewer commissioners on that on a case-by-case basis, rather than having it be uniformly applied across the district.
Now, you know, that being the case, then, then I stand where I voted before, and that is that it's four units, uh, per acre as the baseline density. I think it would be unfortunate if we go forward and, in perpetuity, we're stuck with four units, uh, per acre in places where by definition, we- four units per acre in places where by definition, we have been targeting, trying to get a higher density than that, for all the reasons that go along with it. And, you know, I don't know what that means in terms of redoing all of those analyses, but it seems to me that we want to end up, if we could, put it this way, if it weren't for those restraints based on what was done in the past with absolutely no idea of us standing here today, talking about how high the density could be in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, a very small area, then, then I would so hope that we're not stuck with the four units per acre forever, because that's not, that's not really where we were as a board a year ago or two years ago.
And Warren, we're not. I mean, because they can go to 10, but they have to just...
Well, I understand. Well, I'm talking about the baseline being eight instead of four.
Some of this is just a timing issue, right?
But I'm fine. If, if in fact, that's where we are, then that's where we are. I want to get something built, rather than, you know, propose that we start a baseline of build-out analysis again, because that's nothing done.
To get it built, you have to establish the district, right? And then we can revisit the, the density, right? In terms of, of further analysis to amend the zoning for increased density, you know, we can, we can do those analyses.
Wouldn't say it better myself, Ryan, but they say, I would prefer if we could go forward with the higher, but if we can't, then we can't. With respect to the payments in lieu, though, I do think that we should be looking for ways to minimize the opportunities for that and maximize the opportunities to see that things get built. Because a payment in lieu does not get us any affordable or attainable housing. I mean, we may find a way to work it, you know, but our objective is really to make sure we can get some housing. And it's, you know, it's not a huge number of units that we're talking about as the potential for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. If every one that you can pencil out that makes sense to build, if they were all built, it's not a huge number. And so the idea of payments in lieu, you know, kind of goes against my grain of what our objective here is, even though I recognize that there's a need for that, it certainly shouldn't, you know, everything should be trying to stay away from it, rather than make it easy. And, yeah, and then again, I'm still trying to find the way that we can signal to the town, to the citizens, to the voters, that we're not creating a roadmap for coming up with Airbnb short-term rentals that will not provide any housing meaningful for the people that we're trying to create it for. And unless something in our bylaw or in the, I don't know, preambles or whatever, I guess that's still part of the bylaw, which really talks about, you know, really ensuring prohibiting rentals of less than 182 days, then I think we will not, we'll be losing the opportunity to get voters' support when in fact, there's no reason to lose that support. If, if you knew that you would be building these higher-density units for people that live in town, permanent residents who need the housing, that's going to have much more, much more acceptance by the voters than it will be creating corporate Airbnb rentals. So.
But don't we have that included in the draft of the bylaw already? Wasn't that, we've included, we've addressed that issue and that's included in the bylaw draft?
Yeah, we, we voted on including that.
We voted on it and it's not an open issue.
My understanding was that Brian had said that we really, given that we had the approval authority for site plans, that in approving a site plan, we could condition it that the units in the site plan could be conditioned any way we wished, including no rentals of less than 182 days. But at any rate, I, I would like to make sure that we, that we include that restriction somewhere and use it to essentially inform the voters that we're not creating a wasteland where nobody lives there permanently, it's just a bunch of Airbnb short-term rentals.
I don't have the latest draft in front of me, but I believe we included it as a special condition use. Is that...
Well, it's a, it's a good question to get clarity on, because I think from your February 21st memo, the way I looked at it is, is this was supposed to be as part of a special conditions that you would put on here, but it's not necessarily written into the zoning.
No.
I didn't get the impression that there was still a narrative in the zoning.
But we're not sure that that's legal, right? I think that's...
Okay, that's the issue. Yes, that's the issue.
And I will point out that just because they can't rent it for less than 182 days does not mean that somebody's living in that apartment. They can buy the thing and come four times a year, and that's their right, and we can't, we can't do anything about that.
I mean, I, I appreciate the concern around creating short-term, the potential pitfall of creating short-term rentals through an increased density allowance in this district, but it's a bigger picture that the town has to approach from a regulatory standpoint, and I think that that is still evolving. And, you know, I'm not sure that you're going to solve that for this district. But the town would have to take on a policy position to define and regulate short-term rentals in a way that goes beyond just the Board of Health regulation that we have now, and I just, I'm not sure that we're there yet.
And so you're saying that to include that specifically in the bylaw, as Warren is suggesting, that the legality of that is questionable, whether we can?
Correct.
Yeah. So, and you're saying that the way we would have to address that issue of year-round residency is as a special condition to a multifamily?
Right. You, you would have to define short-term rentals and regulate short-term rentals within this bylaw, rather than prohibiting rentals with less than 182-day rental lease.
Well, then, I guess I would suggest it may be appropriate for this board to do some work exactly along that line. Because the more I, the more I think about our draft and where we're going here, I can see the units having a much greater market value if they are rented out by the day or week to investors or corporates who may even be the developers. And that's, that's just totally going to miss what the whole objective of the short, of the neighborhood center concept is. So if we can't figure out a way to minimize that potential or maximize the opposite, which is what we're trying to do and have people live there, then I think we're doing, doing ourselves a disservice.
So, right now, we can regulate short-term rentals, the way the Board of Health has done, time, place, and manner through zoning. You can ban short-term rentals, but that would not preclude people from renting their places for like a whole month at a time. There's no mechanism in our Mass General laws right now where you can put a year-round restriction on something, although Senate Docket 1040, which was submitted in, I think, January of this year by Julian Seer and Sarah Peak, that does seek to establish the ability of towns to put year-round rental restrictions on properties. So that's still pending. So that's kind of our, our big hope for being able to do that. And sometime at Town Meeting 2024, we'll have some sort of article that's going to put Chatham in a position where if that passes, the year-round rental restriction, we'll be able to adopt it. But right now, that's where we are. It's just, it's just not legal. There's no mechanism to restrict residency unless it's tied to affordability.
Madam Chair, just a comment to staff. You may want to look at the def, the existing definition of dwelling multifamily as it relates to what we're trying to do here. There may be some tweaking you may want to do.
Yeah.
Because there was something in my brain that was just going, I think it's just too...
Yeah, okay. So, I think what, maybe I'm kind of echoing what Warren is saying, that, that we don't want to create a situation where we have a lot of results, the potential for results that are unintended. And what I'm seeing here is, as it stands right now, every, the whole place could be developed at, at a density of four units per acre, multifamily, at market rate, high-end condominiums, and we'd get zero affordable, attainable housing in the whole neighborhood center, more or less. That's a potential result, and also a potential result that they wouldn't be lived in year-round, that there would be investment properties owned by, you know, non-resident investors and rented at premium rates or sold at high prices. So, so my question is, how do we deal with that? You know, the potential for that to happen with this greater density of four units per acre that we're providing here? How do we prevent that result, which is not our intention for this bylaw?
Well, again, I would just state that four units per acre in a multifamily development is not something we have a lot of supply of in town currently.
Yeah.
Right? So having that more diverse housing option, it will be naturally more accessible than a single-family home would be in terms of the cost.
May I be blunt? It'll, it'll cost, you know, 1.75 million instead of 3.75 million. May I be blunt? I, I think that might, so it's still not reaching, if, unless I'm way off base.
No, we're not reaching the right people.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I won't say Chatham bars in, because that will put a conflict in. I'm Chatham Hotel, and I want to buy one of these properties and put five of my employees in there. Now, if I buy it, it's not, it's not affordable, right? I have to sell it to my employees? How does, how can we make it? Because to me, that would solve most of the problems of having a direct connection between people who are working here who need housing and would be here year-round. So I, it just occurred to me that, you know, we don't want to make it so restrictive that we can't allow for a situation like that to happen.
Well, that's happening regardless of this district being in place.
I know, but we actually could incur, I mean, we could, it could be more direct than by default, you know, buy up, look, there, there's a nice property here, I want to go to a developer, I want to put five units in there, I'm, they're going to be housing for my employees. And they're going to be, how, I'm happy to make them affordable, but I'm going to be owning them. But that will be, you know, it will serve all the same purpose of keeping, keeping my employees there, and I'd love to make it 12, 10 units, but, you know, how am I going to do that and own it?
This is, it's, this is a hypothetical.
It is a hypothetical, but it is, it's a, I mean, we, we...
Bob, it's already happening where the inns are buying, are buying the motel.
Hotels and hotels and apartments.
Buying houses for their employees.
Because the problem has become so great.
Firsthand, no, Catherine.
Yeah. No, the problem has become so great, they have to take care of it themselves.
Right.
I'm saying, don't make it so they can't just do this directly. I mean, it seems to me, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get in with the developer and we'll build that one. The way I think we've structured it, maybe they can't because they're, they are going to be owning it. I, I don't know, we, I just want to make sure we haven't precluded a, a big corporation from owning it and, and still having a designated affordable so that, that they can build a density that we want.
I mean, they could happen, that could happen, they could own it. We're not precluding any form of ownership through this. Like zoning doesn't, doesn't regulate the ownership model. I think Gloria's comment earlier was just that it's more typical for developers to build and then convey these rather than manage them. But in the scenario that you're describing, it's, it's more beneficial for them to house their workforce, right? And, and they, as the developer, would have to tell us what their needs are, and you would review that on a project-by-project basis.
Yeah, I, I, I think your scenario could, could actually flip the other way. I mean, you remember, there's a, there's a commercial component that is in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. You can't just build residential by itself without some, some aspect of that. And if, if, if a developer's looking at, he's got a sufficiently sized property to build more, he, he might, you know, be able to work with some of the other prop, you know, property owners around here, commercial property owners, so that he might want to build the 10 units per acre, because he's got a deal going with him. And he, and he converts it over and he builds it and he converts it over and he gets what he wants out of it, which is the initial piece.
Yeah.
So it could work that way, which would provide the housing that that particular entity was looking for. But they don't want to go through the whole process of building everything, and oh gosh, there's another component to this, which is the commercial component. So I, I would think that they're going to work it so that it's not just coming up with four units and selling it out. It, it, it could go the other way, just, just as much. I think it's whatever the market's going to bear out there.
Yeah.
And you'll, you'll see how it works. And when it comes to the density part of this, I, I think we got to stick with the four, as we established right now. And if this works out, or if there's a need, as, as Gloria mentioned, the way your experience is, that you adjust things up later on, so be it. I mean, and then you can always go back to some of these properties and make other adjustments afterwards, if you think that you can handle it from an infrastructure standpoint, a marketability standpoint, availability standpoint. There's opportunity still to make adjustments on this as we see how things are developing.
Arthur.
And, and then my experience is, it's going to be a while before that happens.
Well, Arthur, I hate to throw a monkey wrench in here, but I only know of one or maybe two properties that that could happen to, to have enough land. And, and...
And I agree with you.
We're speculating on something that, that whatever happens can only happen in a small scale because of, it's already built.
It's already built, yes. And there are viable businesses in place, and it would need to be economically attractive to demolish, to displace, for some developer to purchase that property, displace those businesses, demolish those structures, and completely rebuild, and then financially attractive to rebuild according to what our bylaw says. And I could, and also the sell, the owners of the property would need to be willing to sell, and probably because they have viable businesses in place, I'm just going to guess that, you know, they would be unwilling to sell unless the price was right, because it's a, you know, it's a commercially viable property right now, as it is. And so the developer would have to be willing to pay, again, this is all hypothetical, but it's based on how it is, a high price, and then there's a lot of costs involved in demolishing and so on. And they can do four units per acre, and my guess is they're just going to want to do the four units per acre and charge as much as they can.
I mean, I think that the concept behind this neighborhood center, when it began with the low-density mixed use, was to create a top-of-shop development form, right? I mean, these are not high-rise condominiums that are going to be over a million dollars. These are top-of-shop units that, that business owners can use for rental income, for employee housing, you know, I mean, what's to say, happens in 20... Right, or back-of-shop. I mean, what's to say happens 20 years? There's time to revisit the zoning. But I don't think that there's a lot of undeveloped land for a large, multi-unit, mixed-use development that, that...
Unless the town buys it and develops it like they're proposing to do on the two sites there.
Yes, on the two sides.
Yeah, I mean, this, this concept gives the existing commercial uses that are there redevelopment potential to incorporate housing.
Yes, that's true. That's true.
Does the zoning specifically allow, so say there's an existing commercial use, maybe even with residential? So say there's an existing commercial use, maybe even with residential. Does the zoning allow a separate structure for additional housing?
Yes.
I think it can be detached.
So it can, it doesn't have to be all one structure? You can have multiple principal structures per lot?
Yes, except in zone, I think in zone A, that's right, on Route 28, we require commercial facing the street.
Yeah.
Right.
That's required.
So if there's already commercial facing the street, would that person have the ability to add housing behind in a separate structure?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it doesn't have to be.
Yes, that's what we understand, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the existing structures would need to be moved closer to the road with the commercial piece facing Route 28.
They would have to update their site in order to meet the new regulations, though. I mean, I mean, the new zoning. Because we call for things that may not, they, they might not be able to add a building without upgrading the rest of the site, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So then that would be a judgment call on our part.
Right.
When we see a site-by-site basis.
Right. But they still could, all I want to make sure is that they could have, have, as I like to say, multiple principal structures per lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We under, yeah, that's what I understand. And it's kind of specified for each zone, how those have to be configured exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we haven't phrased it as multiple principal structures per lot. It's that the residential component can be detached.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, we're, we're still not permitting single-family homes, correct?
Correct, yes.
And there've been enough additions, tweaks, edits, and so on? Is it a useful exercise to see if we couldn't get a new draft that incorporates all of the changes, so?
I think that is the next step.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that was the intention for tonight, was to review the recommendations about inclusionary zoning. And then I think the next step would be that Ryan and Gloria will prepare the final draft that include all of the decision points that we reached in our previous meeting.
The drafting final draft.
Yeah, yeah. On these points, we've reached decision points on all the other open issues. And then incorporating also the recommendations for inclusionary zoning. And then we'd have the final draft come before us that we would, you know, formally accept. And then at that point, as Ryan has noted in her memo, that's exactly her first point about next step. And then the next step would be public outreach and outreach to other boards and committees in town and other groups who are stakeholders. So I think that is the next step. So, so I'm going to ask the board if we agree to adopt the recommendations for the inclusionary zoning as presented. I mean, we've discussed a lot of issues and, but I haven't been able to pinpoint an open issue that, that we feel needs to be incorporated at this point. Am I correct in, in that assessment of the board's opinion? Yes.
I, I thought we had treatment of partial. I, I think there needs to be a little.
Partial payment in lieu.
Yes, we have to add.
Was there any decision made on the four units per acre? I, I did a couple of numbers. So maybe if the density were five units per acre, you could have that, that twen, the 20% base requirement. And then if you had 2.4 times the base density, you'd get up to 12 units per acre. And then that's where you have your 25% inclusionary requirement. I mean, that's a little bit closer to what Bob was saying, and I think Warren, too. So I, I don't know how you feel about going to five units per acre as opposed to four as your baseline density.
So that's, I had that thought. Thank you so much. The numbers would work out better.
They, they work out, they work out fine. And I, I want to clarify one thing. When I say payment in lieu, I always mean a partial payment in lieu. So nobody's going to payment in lieu their way out of creating a unit. So if you have five units, you're creating one. If we do that whole five unit per acre, 20%. So if you have five units, you have to create, create one. If you do six units, you have to create one, but you have a partial payment in lieu for that extra, like, whatever it is, one-sixth. Like, like, under no circumstances is my intention for someone to do a payment in lieu instead of building an actual unit. But sometimes those numbers don't round, don't come out, don't come out even. Like, it's not a whole number. And rather than rounding up or rounding down, rounding up, not fair to the developer. Rounding down, not fair to the town. That's where that whole idea of a partial payment in lieu comes in, so.
I, I, I think, I think what you're saying is okay. It just, I don't think it changes anything. Somebody could still come in, just build four units per acre, and that's it. There's no requirement to build five.
They, so, exactly. They, they might choose to do that. And then you have a partial payment in lieu for, for 80% of a unit. Because that's where four units comes out.
And if, if that's the purpose in structuring it that way, that's fine. That, that seems to work. But that doesn't change anything from the, from a development standpoint. If, if you choose to go with four units per acre, however, the way it was previously structured, the modified one, it's, it's just a payment in lieu of, is what you get.
The only thing to change.
And that would be fine to do it that way.
But the, but the density bonus is a real, is a real incentive.
And that changed from 10 to 12. That was the only change you made.
Right, because.
And five is the baseline density.
If five is a million, you can now build 12.
Then it goes up to 12.
Now you could, instead of only 10 before.
To get around.
So that is a change.
That is, you're right, that is a change.
And, and I'm just going to ask this. So we have the flow, the analysis of the flow, which I believe I'm understanding that Bob Duncan analyzed the flow at four units per acre, but also said that going higher shouldn't be a problem. Is that correct? So we have the build-out analysis from Phil Daskum at four units per acre. So I would ask the board, are we comfortable pushing that up a little to five units per acre so that the 20% works out better? I mean, personally, I would feel comfortable proposing that to the town. Yeah. With the build-out of four units per acre. We have that analysis from 2014.
So five units per acre would be the baseline density. The inclusionary threshold for capturing units would be four units. Developments of four units are greater. And then at 20% with a density bonus of 2.4.
So I wouldn't, I mean, I.
Otherwise, you're just getting four units.
I'd have a capture unit, I'd have a capture for a partial payment in lieu of two.
Yeah.
Because we already know that's legal.
Yeah, oh, that'd be great. I think that'd be great.
Because, and the way, and the way I look at this is every, and we talked about this. Every single unit that's created makes it harder for us to reach our 10% inclusionary requirement when we can, like, reject, you know, bad 40Bs and everything. So I feel like any unit created contributes to that issue that we have of getting to our 10%. So why shouldn't those be captured in a partial payment in lieu?
All right, so, so am I hearing you saying that you go with five units as a baseline, and the bonus is now two?
So.
So you're up to, up to 10 maximum?
No, 12 maximum.
Baseline density of five units per acre, as opposed to the four that was set in the build-out scenario. And the baseline inclusionary requirement is 20%. This gets to what Bob W. was saying earlier, that if you're doing an incentive, you should actually require a higher percentage of affordable.
Yeah.
So five units per acre, 20% inclusionary requirement is the baseline. Captured at two units in a partial payment in lieu. So two, three, and four, partial payment in lieu. Once you have five units per acre, you're building one of those as an affordable. Density bonus of 2.4 times the base density, which at five acres brings you up to 12 acres per unit. So originally, we were talking about 10. This would bump it up to 12. But you have to understand that not everyone is going to be able to maximize that density. I mean, there could be wetland buffers on this, on the lot. There could be topography. Maybe they just don't want to maximize it. But this would allow them to go up to 12 units per acre, which is a really good incentive. But in order to achieve that good incentive, then all of a sudden, your inclusionary requirement is 25%.
Oh, yeah. I like that.
I like the sound of it. I just wish it was more developable.
So the 11th and the 12th basically almost end up being?
I would describe it as the 6th and the 12th.
Yes, correct. Yes, thank you.
Well, okay, yeah.
Actually, no, it's three out of 12 then, if it's 25%. So it would be the 4th, the 8th, and the 12th.
But you said when they go above 10, then it goes to 25%.
When they, well, 12 units per, if they use the densi, if they use the density.
They go the full density, then they need four instead of, then they need.
No, no, still two.
Three.
Anytime.
Eighty-three instead of.
So anytime you do over five units per acre, you're using the density bonus, and the 25% requirement would kick in. Doesn't mean they have to build 12. Maybe they're only building eight, but it's still 25%.
Yeah, I like.
I like that better. So at nine, they.
Because 40B is less predictable. This is if we have.
I like that a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I like it, too. It kicks it up a notch or two, which is better. And I think the incentives are realistic. I think there's a definite benefit for the, a financial benefit for the developer to have that greater density. And there's a benefit to the town because it does give us guaranteed more.
And we should talk about the split, like, the affordability distribution and including attainable. So that's where 25% through this bylaw is going to be more attractive than 40B because we don't need to have a bunch of 60% AMI units. We can have a bunch of 100 and 120% units.
Yes, which is better.
And that's, that's appealing to a developer.
Yes. And I think also, in some sense, it's at least as appealing to us because we want to reach affordable attainable. We want to have a little bit wider offering, yeah.
Well, you got some, you got some redrafting to do.
Yes, I was just thinking.
Yeah.
I think we need to rework this and put it, because this is a whole different.
It's so different, but a lot better. I mean, it's, and actually, you guys should be really happy because this got pulled from, like, everyone's comments. You know, everyone had valuable things to say, and I think this is a good way of, of integrating them.
Well, that's why we sit and talk together as a board with both of you in public. You know, it's a valuable process. It's a really valuable process. So, good. So I don't know if we can take a formal vote, but does the board agree that what we've just discussed should be integrated into the draft? Can you produce a final draft now integrating all the other decision points as well as the most recent comments?
So let's, just to make sure everybody understands.
Yes.
Let's reframe this for you for the next meeting. We can put this together.
Okay.
In a narrative so that it can be moved to be incorporated into the district. And we can, in one meeting, we can go from making that decision to using that to start public outreach.
Okay.
We're going to take bets on how many times you view this tape.
I've already got these sections rewritten in my mind.
Good, great. So, so next meeting, we won't be looking at the final draft. We'll be looking at a redraft of the inclusionary recommendations. Okay. All right, that's fine. That's fine. That sounds great. I think we've produced something really valuable as a result of this meeting, so that's good. So then the next meeting, after that, we could potentially see the final draft with all of the other decision points incorporated.
So I'll have, we'll have that as, we can have that as well for you at the next meeting. So it's just a, you know, incorporation on, on our end after you've seen them both.
Okay, that sounds great.
It'll be a draft of the final draft.
Okay, that sounds great.
It's a draft for public outreach, right? I mean, these are, these are all things that we need feedback.
So then the meeting after next meeting, we could begin public outreach. Would that be correct to say? Okay. And then, did you want to take a few minutes to ask the board about venues for public outreach or groups for public outreach? You did mention that.
Yes, so I, in the interim, I can begin reaching out to different groups to see if they'd like us to attend a meeting and make a presentation. I know the West Chatham Village Associations, of which there are two. I'd be reaching out to them. And then other suggestions that you have, let me know. You know, I know that in town-wide bylaws, we typically do some outreach with the Chatham Men's Club. There are other groups that, that have an interest when, when it's a town-wide article. Here, I think it's a bit more of a discreet group. But any suggestions you have, let us know, and I can start making those connections and scheduling some dates.
And I suggested to Ryan that, so it'll be after the next meeting, then the next meeting after that, that we could just include a section in each of our public planning board meetings that will be an information and listening session on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaws. So we could do that at each of our meetings. And then also, what we've done in the past is typically we've arranged a listening and information session at the community center on a Saturday, or maybe a couple of Saturdays where more people are available to come. As Ryan mentioned, the Chatham Men's Club, we've usually had someone bring it, you know, bring it there. And the two West Chatham Associations, other boards and committees, we've already approached with a previous iteration, but we should do it now with the final draft. To finance committee, to historical commission, to.
And the HBDC.
HBDC, yes.
Finance Committee will weigh in just as part of their process for reviewing articles for the warrant.
Yes.
I would hold off on, on them.
Okay, great. And who else do we usually go to? Any ideas for, anyway, we can think of other potentials for outreach. Somehow, we should reach out to the residents of West Chatham as well as the business owners of West Chatham specifically. So even invite them to attend one of our sessions in the context of a planning board meeting. Okay, great. Any other points from the board before we go to Mr. Dubis' motion?
Could be mine.
Any comments from the public? Anyone connected who would like to make a comment? Okay, well, that being said, I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting if I could have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
And could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Bob Woodchafter?
Approve.
Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenhalgh?
Approve.
Bob Dubis?
Approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I approve. And the clock is, it looks like it's 6:32?
No.
No.
6:41.
Oh, sorry, it's slow. 6:41, okay, great. 6:41, we'll note the time of adjournment. Thank you. Our clock is off.